Good evening, my name is Greg Ferris and as President of Forney ISD Board of Trustees, I hereby call this Forney ISD Board of Trustees meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Certify that a quorum is present and that the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required by the law. The monthly meetings are open to the public, although these meetings are public, comments and questions from the audience are confined to the time designated for citizens to address the board. Again, thank you for joining us this evening. It's now, at this time, we'll take item number 16 out of order. The board will convene into closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code 551074, 551071, and 551072. It is now 6:01 PM, will be dismissed into closed session. Good evening. I want to thank you all for being here tonight as we resume our meeting back into open session. Thank you all for joining us. Just like to call attention to today is 9/11. On this day, we'd like to pay tribute to the police officers, firefighters, and other first responders who died in the line of duty, as well as the innocent civilians who have lost their lives in 2001 terrorist attacks. We will never forget all the lives that were touched forever on September 11th, 2001. In recognition of this 9/11 Patriot Day, we'd like to ask you to join us in a moment of silence. Following that, Jeremy Prather, the pastor from Lake Point Church, will close us in prayer. So would please rise.
God, we thank you that our trust isn't in ourselves alone. Anything that we've accomplished, it's not in other people, our trust is in you. And if we're honest, you know that sometimes that's difficult for us. God, would you just in this moment tonight, begin to work through our unbelief? As Scripture says, "Help our unbelief." Where there's a gap between what we're experiencing and what we expect, Father, would you help us to fill that gap with trust? God, today we're reminded that for those of us who are in Christ Jesus, you didn't give us a spirit of fear or timidity, you gave us a spirit of power. You gave us a spirit of love and of self-discipline. Father, you comfort us so that we can be a comfort to those around us. You bless us so we can be a blessing to those who you put in front of us. God, you give us strength, creativity, to be a blessing, to help those who we come in contact with, and you've created a calling, a unique calling for each and every one of us. So Father, our prayer is that you help, help us to discover what that calling is and to walk in it because we know that what you call us to, you're going to equip us for. God, today we remember that we stand on the shoulders of courageous, of brave men and women who paved the path before us so that we could have the freedom that we have today. So our cry today, as we rally together as one community, is that we live lives worthy of that freedom. God, thank you for Jesus. It's in his name we pray. Amen.
We are excited to celebrate some very special students tonight, and we're going to start with, I'd like to ask Ms. Judith Willis, Principal of Brown Middle School. She'll introduce her Secondary Student of the Month, and then will lead us in a U.S. pledge, followed by Katie Wilson, who's Principal of Johnson Elementary. She'll introduce our Elementary Student of the Month, who'll lead us in our Texas pledge.
Good evening, thank you. Dr. Terry, President Ferris, Board members and guests, it is my privilege to introduce this September Secondary Student of the Month, Ms. Arielle Burks, an eighth grade student at Brown Middle School. Arielle is joined here tonight by her mother and stepfather, Ashley and Curtis Mayfield, and her brothers and cousins, who are all students in Forney ISD. There are many wonderful things I can tell you about Ari. Ari is an honor student at Brown. In addition to taking all advanced classes, she is on our volleyball and basketball teams and plays the clarinet in the band. Ari is setting herself up for success by taking advantage of the opportunities that Forney ISD is giving our middle school students. Ari will finish her eighth grade year with three full high school credits: Algebra One, Spanish, and Human Services. Ari's teachers unanimously say she is an excellent student with a positive attitude. In describing Ari, a teacher said, "She is always prepared, carries herself in such a way as to be an example for anyone who comes in contact with her on our campus. She is kind and has a good sense of humor. She shows much patience with herself and others, and is a pleasure to work with in class." This month, our Capturing Kids' Hearts theme is empathy, which Ari definitely displays on a daily basis. She is present for her teammates and classmates and is supportive and caring towards her peers. Her positive attitude and leadership represent the core values at Brown Middle School. I asked Ari what has helped her to become so successful in her advanced classes and her multiple activities, and she told me her mom is a big influence on her life by helping her to understand what she needs to prioritize and what she needs to set aside in order to be successful in classes and on the court. Ari's favorite classes are Spanish and athletics. Her future goals are to attend Stanford University and continue her basketball career in the WNBA, or become a lawyer. I am confident Ari will be successful in anything she chooses to do. We are proud of Ari and the positive impact she has on our campus and our district. So it is my honor to present our Brown Middle School and Forney ISD Secondary Student of the Month, Ms. Arielle Burks.
Thank you very much, Dr. Terry, Mr. Ferris, and Board. Thank you for having us here. I want to present to you a unique young man. This is Milton Kinwi Mume. He is a fourth grade student at Johnson who joined us during his third grade year. Tonight, he joined by his mom, Adeline Mume. She is a nurse. And dad, Emmanuel Mume, who is an IT guru, from what I understand. Milton has four siblings, three of which who attend Forney ISD. I asked his teachers, or I asked the teachers in fourth grade, who would they want to represent our school? It was unanimous. Milton joined us, when he joined us last year, he quickly won us over with his quiet demeanor and his inner compass to be the best that he can be. He loves math and science and is a GT student. But above all, he loves Legos. In fact, he has built robotic hands. He has also built a battery-operated Ferrari, and tells me, and this is not a surprise to me, that he wants to grow up to be an architect. My first introduction to Milton last year were our initial conversations about, "Ms. Wilson, when, when can I go to GT? When am I, when am I going to go to GT classes?" And we talked about it almost endlessly, but the light in his eye when he asked those questions was unmistakable. This was a special young man. I asked Milton, "What is it that you like about Johnson Elementary?" He says, "Because it's a unique school. I like all of my teachers." And he says that Johnson stands out above all the rest. So tonight, I present to you Milton Kinwi Mume as Johnson Elementary Student of the Month.
Will you please stand or remain standing while the Air Force Junior ROTC brings into our colors for tonight?
Other arm, halt! Right, face! Three, set, arms!
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms!
Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Order, colors! About, face! Post!
Now we're going to get pictures, okay? So you want to go up, take you up here to the center? We're going to do pictures, we'll get your family next, okay?
Yeah.
with more student recognitions. At this time, I turn the microphone over to Kristin Zaspol, Executive Director of Marketing and Communications.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Board. Thank you for having us this evening. It is my honor tonight to recognize our Air Force Junior ROTC program. If they would join us up front? After receiving the highest possible rating during their unit evaluation last year, the Air Force JRTC program received another top award this summer, the Distinguished Unit with Merit Award. The honor recognizes Air Force JRTC units that have performed well above and beyond normal expectations and that have distinguished themselves through outstanding service to their school and community while meeting the Air Force JRTC Development Mission for America. The Distinguished Unit with Merit Award is limited to the very best of the best. Of the nation's 820 Air Force JRTC units, only 113 in the nation received this award this past year.
And I believe we have a special presentation, Mr. Ferris, if you would like to.
Moving on, Ms. Zaspol, I think you have another one?
We do, and I'm going to ask Mel Harland, our Director of Advanced Academics, to come join us and present this next recognition.
Thanks for having us here. I am very excited to present something that has never happened in Forney ISD before. College Board gives out national recognition awards to students who score in the top on SAT, PSAT, AP exams, and have an exceptional GPA. And in years past, we've had a handful, maybe two, three, national board recognitions. This year, we had 39 students who received national board, or College Board National This is absolutely a testament to the hard work that these students have put in, bettering themselves and bettering their academics, and also the hard work that our staff has put in to helping these students realize that excellence is absolutely attainable. And we've got North Forney up here first. Now, we are missing a lot of our kiddos because we also have the College Fair tonight, and many of these kiddos are seniors and juniors, and they are making the serious decisions right now. So we're missing a few, but the ones who are able to make it over here, we are glad that they are here with us. So first up, we've got North Forney here. And next up, we have our award recipients from Forney High School.
Next to the microphone is Mr. Nick Edwards, Director of Staff and Family Services, to make some presentations.
Mr. Ferris, I'm not sure if that was me while they all left right there. Dr. Terry, Mr. Ferris, School Board, the Forney Family Award goes to people and organizations that represent the very best of our Forney community. Tonight, I'm excited to present to you two community partners who truly are the best of our community. The first Forney Family Award tonight goes to Free Life Church. Free Life Church has partnered with the district and adopted both Smith Intermediate and Blackburn Elementary. I believe their partnership there, we will see more of that to come, and some more Forney Family Awards from that partnership. But tonight, I want to honor them and partner with us for the Project Backpack. Free Life donated over $10,000 towards backpacks and hosted over 200 families, offering free uniforms and haircuts on their campus. They are committed to families in our community and truly are Forney family. Free Life Church. First Presbyterian has been one of the longest-standing partners in our community. Tonight, they are awarded the Forney Family Award for their Uniform Exchange Program. Last year, they provided 5,487 dress code items to students in need in our district. They are already off to a fast start this year and have already been working to create more and more donations and be able to provide for our students. Their impact and what they do make it clear that they really are the best of Forney family. First Presbyterian Church.
Our students are more successful for all these volunteers being a part of our district and our Forney family, so we thank you all. This time, we're going to take a five-minute recess, and then we'll reconvene with item number six. Thank you. We'll call this meeting back to order. Moving on to item six, it's our reports. The next three items, reports only, require no action from the board. Six A is our monthly financial report. Mr. John Chase, Chief Financial Officer, will call you today.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Tonight, we're here to discuss the July financial report. This is the first month of the new fiscal year, so just jumping right in, starting with the general fund. Year-to-date revenue collective is 1.5 million, and this is 1% of the amount that was estimated. And as the bullet number two stayed there, that the payments that we receive in July and August, those are actually, we get the cash in those months, but the revenue is actually recognized in the prior year because that's when the revenue was earned, based on the average daily attendance. So for the next couple of months, our revenue collections are going to be a little bit light because of that. For prior year comparisons, we were also at 1% at this same point in time. Moving on to expenditures, year-to-date is 9.4 million, which is 5% of the amount appropriated for comparative purposes in the prior year. We were also at 5%. You might have noticed, for the data processing budget, was 19% expended at this point in time, which is a little about, I say 10%, higher than what you would expect each one of those functions to be. But we, most of our site licenses that we pay for our annual software agreements, they're all front-loaded in the month of July, so it drives that percent expended number up for this month. Moving on to food service, year-to-date revenue collected here was 14,000. Again, not very much. We don't have a whole lot of activity in the month of July in food service, that, most of which is, is state-on-behave payments that gets transferred to TRS on behalf of our employees to fund the retirement system. We are less than 1% collected at this point in time, and last year, we were the same, less than 1%. Food service expenditures, year-to-date was 93,000. This is about 1%. Again, we don't have a whole lot of activity in the month of July, so there's not a lot of expenses or collections. And last year, again, we're in the same place, 1%. And then finally, in the debt service fund, year-to-date collected is 354,000. This is 1% of the amount estimated. Last year, at the same point in time, we were less, actually less than 1%, but not a whole lot of activity in the debt service fund. Our property tax bills don't go out until October, November timeframe, so our heavy collections won't happen until after that point. And then there are no expenses for this month, there weren't none last, last year in the month of July either. Our big months in, in the debt service fund, as we've talked in the past, is in month of August and in February. So when we present this next month, we will have a large principal and interest payments that we'll have made out of this fund. And then finally, the cash investments that were on hand at the end of July, it was 300, about $15 million, 66% of which was, was the capital project funds. We've got a lot of activity going on for buildings right now, it's no, no big surprise there, it's about the same as it has been in the prior months. But that concludes the financial report. Overall, I think we're, you know, pretty well sitting at the same spot we were last year at the same point in time, and that concludes the report. And so, Mr. Ferris, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Next is item B, our master planning update, and this is Kim Morzak, Chief Operations Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Jeff Fisher's not here tonight, so I'm going to muddle through this one. We do have an update on all of our current projects. I will tell you that starting next month, I'll add a new project, RAY Intermediate. About to break ground there on that additional gym, storm shelter, so you'll start seeing us scratching the ground the next couple of weeks, getting moving on RAY. So this is Keith Bell, Opportunity Central. As you know, the west side is occupied. We have a few punch items over there that we're still working on. All the irrigation's done, landscape is in, looking really good. The bottom picture there is the arena. The ceiling has been painted, all of the upper bleachers have been installed. They're currently working on the lower bleachers at this point. Sports lighting slated to start installed this week. All the tekdom panels are up, those are painted in field, so they're being painted now, starting to really take shape in there. The top picture is the third floor on the east side, just kind of showing, tape and bedding's done, tiles installed, they're about to start flooring up there. That middle picture is OC Junior, back on the west side. I'm not really sure how they got the order of these pictures in here. And then the bottom, there's one of seven elevators. I think we have four installed and, installed and fully operational. We still have three left that we're, they're working on. The scoreboard has been framed. AV has started in the theater, all the finishes are done. The seats are on a boat, as well as the 19-foot movable walls in there on their way, so getting close in that theater space. North Forney High School Freshman Center, both North Forney and Forney High are in similar states, north, maybe a little bit further along in some areas. Forney had a little bit larger project. Tape and bed's done, most of the windows are installed, bath, all the bathroom tile's completed, hallway tile has begun, ceiling grids are dropped in all of the classrooms. Kitchen install has, has begun. MEP is mostly done. We're having some baffling issues on the ductwork, but we have that figured out, and that's about to start moving much, much faster. Storm shelter, baffles are in progress now. Most of the veneer, or the brick has started on the exterior, all the sidewalks are poured, and they just finished the last parking lot there at North Forney. Phase two, they have dug out everything for the new addition. They have installed the new stadium lights. It was a pretty tricky ordeal, but that, that got finished. Underground utility installations in progress, and they have started pouring concrete lots. About half of them are done. They continue those pours. Forney High School, kind of in the same spot as North. That bottom picture is interesting. That is the learning hub. There is a skylight that goes over that. Those are both in fabrication, and they'll start installing those in the next couple of weeks. They have a little bit bigger skybridge there. You can see it in the top right-hand side. It's a little further along than that now. That's their kitchen in the top picture. That's storefront glass that goes in, but they're about the same space that North Forney is. Just a few more pictures of concrete. Their parent loop is in. The bottom one kind of shows you the hall. That's actually completed now and painted. They've started paint. So tape embed is continuing in progress. They have their windows in as well, so moving right along. This is Forney High, phase two. That top picture was a little bit scary. We had to do a lot of utility relocation. As you know, I joke, we've used every square inch of Forney High School's dirt, so we're having to relocate some more utilities up there, and they had to make sure that the scoreboard stayed intact. So their crawl space excavation is done. Most of the utilities are done, and they're going to start drilling piers. Well, they're supposed to start this week, but if the rain comes, it might be delayed till next week. Teemer and Warren are both in similar spots. We got really lucky. We had no steel delay on Teemer or Warren, so these guys are both in great shape, right on track, running and gunning on both of them. In the top right-hand corner, you can see the storm shelter. That's that gray part on the top right at Teemer. And then the ICF is probably double what's in that top picture. The insulated concrete forms are going in really, really quickly. Decking's in progress. They're moving along really nicely. Concrete pour at Warren. They had a little bit of delay because we had the old transportation center that had to be torn down, so their concrete was a little bit behind, but he's catching up. They're racing those two to see, I told them I want them to have a photo finish. I want them to be within five minutes of each other, and both early. So we're in good shape on those two. And then the last project is Ed Wilson. It's kind of far out there, so it's a little hard to tell where they are, but they actually have first-floor decking down. The gray beams are poured. They're moving right along, and they actually have this road poured, so it shows you the form of the top, but that part of that road is already poured. The utilities are in, so moving right along. Looking good on most of our projects, all of our projects, so. Any questions? Told you everything I know, so please don't ask anything.[778.32][778.32](Laughter).
Good job. That's a lot of projects, so appreciate all you do to keep them on track.
Thank you.
Moving on then to item C, Safety Audit Report. Chief Joseph Sanders, Forney ISD Chief of Police.
Good evening, President Ferris. Thank you for having me. Dr. Terry, Board, as usual. So tonight, I get the pleasure of giving you the Safety Audit Report. The Safety Audit Report's a little different than the audit report that the state comes in and surprises us with sometimes on a monthly basis. So this is the three-year audit report. The last one was done prior to the inception of the Police Department, so this is our first one as a Police Department with the safety and security team underneath the umbrella of the Police Department. So it's our first go at it, and I think we did pretty well. So let me read what we have. So the 2020-2023 District Audit Report was completed as required by the Texas Education Code 37.108. All district campuses, including maintenance and transportation departments, were audited. Upon completion of the audit cycle, it was determined that all campuses were in compliance. An executive summary of the audit was presented before the Safety and Security Team, or the Committee, on July 26th of this year for recommendation to you, the Board. The executive summary included the introduction, methodology, and executive summary content. Campus and building observations included campus-specific commendations and recommendations for each campus. Based on the Forney ISD Audit Team's observation, commendations were made for each campus already following the Texas School Safety Center Best Practices, and then recommendations were made for district implementation and/or improvement for the Texas School Safety Center Best Practices. These recommendations will be shared with the campuses after, upon the completion of this evening. The audit is due on the 15th, and the rest of it is hopefully with your blessing, and that we'll get it passed. So I want to thank everybody for it. I want to thank Rick's team for being a part of the audit. They were an integral part of our success, and everything that we're doing is to keep everybody here in the district safe and sound, so thank you. Is there any questions?
Thank you, Chief Sanders. Appreciate your report tonight. Next item is item number seven, Public Forum. No one signed it to address the Board tonight. Moving on then to item eight, Consent Agenda. Eight A is approved minutes from August 7, 2023 Board Meeting. Eight B, approved the Budget Amendment. Eight C, approved the Resolution Regarding Review of Local Investment Policy. Eight D, approved Resolution and Adjunct Faculty Agreement with Texas A&amp;M. Eight E, approved Dallas College MOU. Eight F, approved Texas Tech MOU. Eight G, approved the TVCC MOU. H, approved the IWU MOU. Eight I, approved purchase of Cisco Cloud Security Software. J, approved Furniture Equipment and Technology Purchases for Forney High School Phase Two and North Forney Phase Two additions. And K, approved the modular building relocation payment. The Board may act on each of these separately or collectively. Do I have a motion from the Board?
Mr. Ferris, I move the Board collectively approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion to approve it collectively by Ms. Bateman. Do I have a second? Mr. Johnson? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I don't hear none. At this time, we're going to skip nine. We'll come back to item nine later. Moving on to item 10, Consideration and Possible Approval of Revision of Policy DEC Local as a First Reading. Mr. Rick Gere, Chief of Human Services. I'd like to ask you to come to the microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris, Board Trustees. Since our district has its own Police Department with commissioned police officers, the district is now required to offer mental health leave and quarantine leave. So the adjustments in DEC represent that change for us. I'm glad to entertain any questions you may have.
Dr. Terry, have any other suggestions or comments?
No, sir. Just as a reminder, this is a first reading, and so we would, if there are no questions or concerns, we would recommend moving this onto the consent agenda for the next meeting.
Thank you very much. Ms. Elsie, would you please add this to the consent agenda for the October meeting, please? We'll move on to item 11, Consideration and Possible Approval of Revision of EIC Local as a First and Final Reading. Mr. Gere?
Yes, sir. As part of the process of having a standalone virtual academy, Forney ISD was required to enroll full-time virtual students in their own entity. In order to facilitate this change, we need to address our current EIC policy. Additionally, EIC has some old language regarding students when they were freshmen in 2012, and we thought it might be a good idea to remove that out of policy. The revised policy will allow students... Well, we skipped update 121. It didn't get moved.
We're on item 11 now.
There you go. Additionally, as I said, EIC has some language about freshmen when they're 2012, so our recommendation is to move that language. The revised policy will allow students who graduate from the virtual academy to receive top 10% honors. However, they will not be allowed to award valedictorian, salutatorian, or the top 10. Now, whereas our local adoption process calls for two readings of our proposed policy, we are asking the Board to implement the process for emergency adoption with one reading as is provided by BF Local. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them the best I can.
Thank you, Mr. Gere. Dr. Terry, any further comments?
Just a couple. Just as a reminder, Board, this was a really unique situation. We had a virtual academy in place last year. The Governor actually added this waiver opportunity, and we're one of the few in the state to tackle this, and that's why we're coming to you tonight with some adjustments to make this work for all of our kids. And we've got a lot of kids enrolled in this program, and it's being very successful. So we would recommend that we do go ahead and get this policy in place as a first and final reading this evening, so recommend as presented.
Board, you've heard recommendations from the Administration. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I move to approve the revision of Policy DEC Local as a first and final reading.
I have a motion from Mr. Regan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't hear none. Moving on to item 12, Consideration and Possible Approval of Property and Casualty Insurance. Mr. Chase, I'd like to ask you to come back to the microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Including your background information in your Board Packet was the property and casualty insurance renewal for the district. Just by way of view, we actually belong to a purchasing cooperative called the Property and Casualty Alliance of Texas. We've been with this group for as long as I've been here, and it predates me, so a good while we've been in this insurance co-op. They've been very good about paying claims. We've had some pretty significant claims in the last five years, I would say, six years, and we've had no problems with, you know, some of the claims that we had during the Snowvid, as it's affectionately known as, when we lost power at some of our campuses in the north end of our district and had some pipes freeze. I think that claim was about $775,000 or so, and we had no problems with claims payment on that. We had a transformer a couple of years ago that malfunctioned out there at Forney High School, and that one was over $700,000. Again, we had no problem with claims payment with that. So I say all that to say, you know, we got our renewal. The renewal's just under $2,300,000. That's about $937,000 more than it was last year, but just keep in mind, about $500,000, I'd say $25,000 of that is related to new value that they're insuring, because we added the Keith Bell Opportunity Central, Dewberry Elementary School, the North Forney Transportation Lot Expansion, and so forth. So that would be about $400,000 or so left that was actually related to a rate increase. And we've had a lot of claims in this area over the last few years. I just outlined, you know, a few of them that we had, plus there's been a lot of wind and hail claims, and it's driven the cost of insurance up. And so, all that said, again, our actual claims or premium for the year would be $2,696,307, and our recommendation is that we approve the payment as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. Dr. Terry?
Yes, sir. I'm sure we've all kind of seen that on insurance right now, it's moving up a little bit, and so we would recommend approval as presented. They've done a good job for us in the past.
Thank you. Board, you've heard the recommendation from Administration. May I have a motion, please?
Mr. Ferris, I move to approve the property and casualty insurance premium payment.
I have a motion from Dr. Mudiya. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't hear none. Thank you very much. At this time, we'll move on to item 13, Consideration and Possible Adoption of Resolution and Related Assignment of Campus Security Personnel. Mr. Joe Sanders, Chief of Forney ISD Police Department. Back to the microphone, please.
Thank you again, President Ferris. The Texas Education Code, Section 37.0814, requires that each school district Board of Trustees determine the appropriate number of police officers and armed security for each district campus, and sets a target of one armed security officer present during regular school hours. And that's during regular school hours for each district campus. Due to lack of qualified personnel, the Forney Independent School District has thus been able to secure qualified peace officers for each campus, despite the Forney ISD Police Department's actively working on identifying and hiring qualified personnel since the department's inception. We're going to continue to try to hire, and will constantly try to find the best qualified applicant for this district. The Forney ISD, the Forney Independent School District seeks to set a minimum standard for provisions of security at each campus in accordance with the Texas Education Code 37.0814(c) and d), and the Forney ISD and the Forney ISD Police Department are committed to the safety and security of all students, staff, and has and will continue to make reasonable efforts to secure qualified peace officers for each district campus. We are recommending the following standards presented before you, as listed in the resolution that was presented to you.
Thank you, Chief Sanders. Dr. Terry?
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. The legislation that was presented this year did put some new requirements, as Chief Sanders just shared with you, and they didn't necessarily provide all the funding for those recommendations. However, we do have plans within the current budget, which would be a successful, which would include a successful election in November, to go ahead and go to a one-to-one setting for all of our campuses, just to remind you from the Board perspective. So tonight's resolution would go ahead and set that standard in place as of today, and as Chief Sanders says, with a successful November election, we would go ahead and move directly into moving all of our campuses to a one-to-one setting with multiple of our high school campuses. So we would recommend approving the resolution as presented as of today.
Board, you've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
President Ferris, I move to approve the resolution related to assignment of campus security personnel.
I have a motion, Ms. Burkalter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Bateman? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't hear none. At this time, moving to item 14, it's closed session. We'll go into our second closed session. It is now 7:54 PM. We'll go into closed session under Texas Government Code 551074, 551071, 551076, 551129, and 551072. Will now be dismissed. It's now 8:51, and we'll reconvene back into open session from closed session. And moving on then, first, item number nine. Item number nine, there'll be no action tonight. Item number 15, Consideration and Possible Approval of Ratification of employment professional contracts. There's no action on that. Moving on to item 16, Consideration and Possible Approval of a Resolution to Authorize District to Participate as an Intervener in Accountability Litigation. Do I have a motion from the Board?
Mr. Ferris, I move to approve the revision of... Let's try it again. I move to approve the resolution related to the assignment... No, that's not it. Let somebody else do it.
There you go.
Make a motion to approve the adoption of the resolution to authorize District to participate as intervener in accountability litigation. Sorry, I don't know the wrong page.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbs. Have a motion? Do I have a second?
I think that was the whole Board, sir.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I don't hear none. Moving on then to item 17, Dr. Terry, we'd like to cover some announcements and dates.
I'm not sure I know where we're at right now. That made me laugh, so we'll have to fight over who gets the second, but...
I go to Johnson.
He's maybe the one person who didn't... I heard a voice over there. I thought it was him.
That's okay. So we do have a lot going on right now. Just as a reminder, we've got both of our homecomings Thursday, North Forney Homecoming, and Friday is Forney High's Homecoming, and we invite you out. Kristen, correct me if I'm... You want to give me the time on that?
We will throw t-shirts in the first quarter, so you can be here before 7 o'clock.
We will be throwing some Forney Family shirts, and so I'd love to have everybody out for those two events if you're available, for both of those games, Thursday and Friday. And then next week, we do have the Dewberry Elementary Dedication. I want to invite everybody out to that, and our Tass of Tazby Convention for those attending on September 29th, and we'll get more on the itinerary very soon. I think Becky's got that for you guys this week. So other than that, Mr. Ferris... So other than that, Mr. Ferris, we are having a great school year. We're going to turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. We'll now call it 8:55, and this meeting is adjourned.